Good morning. This meeting at the Baltimore City Council Health, Environment and Technology Committee is now called to order. I am Councilwoman Danielle McCray, representing the 2nd District and also Chair of the committee. In attendance, we have committee members, Councilwoman Felicia Porter, representing the 10th District, and also Councilwoman Mark Conway, representing the 4th District. Before we get started, just as a reminder, please take a moment to turn off or silence your cell phones if you have them on. Today, the committee is going to be holding a hearing on Resolution 24-0219R, informational hearing, city-wide rat abatement efforts for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Health Department, DPW, and DHCD to discuss city-wide rat abatement efforts, including reducing the rodent population, collaboration of city agencies on coordinated abatement measures, and the status of the Health Department's Bureau of Vector Control. At this time, we are going to hear from the sponsor of the bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to thank everyone for joining us today. The purpose of this committee is for us to address a critical issue that has been far overlooked for too long, the rise of the rodent population here in the city of Baltimore. And just to provide some context, in 2023, Baltimore was ranked one of the 10 top cities, top 10 cities, excuse me, for rat infestations nationwide. We know that rodents are not just an inconvenience, they are a serious public health threat that many of the large municipalities across the nation are getting a handle on. The health risks not only include disease transmission, food contamination, but also contribution to unsafe living conditions, especially in vulnerable neighborhoods. I want to emphasize that having a clean and healthy neighborhood is a fundamental right that our constituents deserve. And so, this is an opportunity to provide interest and also collaboration between the agencies, fellow council members, and the community to ensure that we get a handle on this issue and not only prioritizing the immediate issue, but really looking at long-term innovative solutions so that we can really get this under control. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We're going to hear from our agencies first, the City Solicitor's Office.
Hi, Desiree Lucky with the City Solicitor's Office. The Law Department approves this bill for legal form and sufficiency.
Thank you. And the Health Department?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Julia Roche, Legislative Affairs Director from the Baltimore City Health Department. As it sounds like you all are aware, rat abatement previously was housed within the Health Department. However, about 20, 21 years ago, it moved into DPW. So, we really defer to DPW to speak to their efforts around rats. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm DHCD.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason Wright, representing the Department of Housing and Community Development. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report. And I know DPW has a presentation coming in. We have also contributed a few slides to that presentation, so I'll be able to go into a little bit of information to share.
Okay. And for DPW, how long is the presentation?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Alejandra Ivanovich, representing DPW. The presentation is 16 slides.
Okay. Are we able to get through this in 15 minutes?
I believe so.
Okay. And you did submit a, you guys did submit a report. Do you stand by your report?
Yes, no objection.
Okay. We can start your presentation whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you.
So, good morning, Chair McCray and members of the committee. My name is Robert Shadford, a legislative liaison in the office of DPW's Office of Legislative Affairs. Next slide.
Can you speak clearly into the mic, please? If your mic is not on, can you turn it on?
All right. Is this better? Okay. So, we would like to start the presentation with some foundational information. The Norway rat, also known as the brown rat, is the most common rat species in Baltimore. Norway rats have a flexible diet, which does include animal waste. They tend to prefer cities with bodies of water nearby, as that is a key survival resource. They can find shelter in bulkways, tall grass, and even abandoned buildings. Finally, they have a fast breeding period, which consists of approximately 21 to 23 days. So, next slide, please. DPW has a multifaceted approach to rat abatement. Our primary arm is our rat rubout program. The key methods for that program include inspecting proactively, baiting, as well as educating. Now, there will be more in-depth information about the program in the following slide, but prior to that, I just wanted to speak to the three supportive components that we have. And the first of those being municipal trash cans, which again, eliminate food source. You know, by having it secured in bins, that food source is not present to the rodent populations. And being that it consists of durable composite resin, they're not able to chew through that either. Our street and alley cleaning combats both food source and shelter as well. The idea being with less blight, there is less food source and it's just less attractive for rodent populations. And lastly, lot maintenance assists with shelter, being that it reduces the amount of green shelter. As previously stated, rats can take shelter in tall grass or meadows. So, the lot maintenance that we provide to city-owned properties is helpful for that effort. Next slide. So, in this slide, we will dive into the specifics of our rat program. Here we have the composition, the coverage, and the responsibilities. At the moment, the team is comprised of 10 pest control workers. The team lead is also involved in our pest control activities. The team reports to Chief Guy Bell Senior, who is here with us today. And, sorry about that. And they are under the Bureau of Solid Waste. So, the coverage, the team rotates through one city, one council district per day, visiting at least one community per district monthly. Larger districts receive at least two visits monthly. So, the team works together in one district to maximize efficiency. Below coverage are some of the responsibilities. Those in the field responsibilities include proactive inspections and 311 requests. As you can see, our pest control team can be very busy as we can handle 82 inspections daily. Next slide. So, speaking to those responsibilities a little more in depth, I'll start with the proactive inspections, which are pretty straightforward. The pest control team proactively identifies any rat burrows that need any treatment. They also check for burrows or previously active burrows to make sure there is no recent activity. Now, the 311 portion starts with a service request via our 311 portal. And after the request is submitted, the member goes out and inspects the location. If a burrow is found, the team member applies the bait directly into the burrow and places a yellow flag and the area is treated. They also check to see other burrows to make sure that there are no signs of recent activity. And that's where the proactive piece kind of combines with the reactive piece, because as our pest control teams are on site, they are also proactively scanning and responding to any of the requests. And at the end of it, if a burrow is found, they will place, they will leave a hang card for the resident, notifying them of such. Next slide. So, starting, this will start the data portion of our presentation. We're starting with the inspection totals. These totals include both proactive inspections and 311 requests. Based off the data, we are on track to increase this year's inspections from last year's totals. In the middle of our slide is the first half-year comparisons. And we're already seeing an increase of 25%. With year 24 having totals of 76,436 and year 23 having a total of 60,718, that increase of 25.9.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Yes, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Below that are some insights. We typically perform more requests and inspections during the summer months. And we notice the opposite in colder months. That presumably follows the logic that there is more food source and resources available in the summer, just with more people about. So, we have noticed that in our data. Next slide. So, on this slide, we have our district breakdown. The green bars in the graph are the number of proactive inspections, and the blue portions are the number of 311 rat rubout requests. So, as you can see, District 13, 1, and 10 are the areas where we receive more 311 requests, and the data reflects that. Across all districts in 2023, we completed 138,000 proactive inspections and reactive requests. And based off half-year data, we are already at 76,000 proactive requests and 311 requests for the year of 2024. Next slide. So, closing out the data portion, this will show the number of proactive inspections conducted compared to the actual number of 311 service requests that we get. So, the green bar being year 23's proactive inspections versus the number of 311 requests. So, as you can see, in year 2023, we had 96 of our rat abatement data, 96% being comprised of proactive inspections and 4% being reactive service requests. So, this year is a similar story with 96.5% of proactive inspections taking place and 3.5% consisting of reactive service requests. Next slide. There is ample information and resources on our website with more information about the rat rubout program and informational flyers as well. We also have the Clean City Guide, which serves as a resource for clean city habits. The guide has sections on proper waste management and outlines responsibilities of residents and business owners. Now, we have this information hyperlinked and it's attached to the presentation, but we can get the committee the links directly if need be. Next slide. So, here we wanted to discuss resident tips, highlighting the important role of municipal trash cans as the first line of defense. As mentioned, they are critical in keeping that food source away from the rodents. And if a resident is in need of a replacement, whether it be lost, stolen, or damaged, they can request one via 311. We also like to emphasize, you know, yard maintenance tips, touching on points earlier about how flexible their diet is. It's crucial to make sure animal waste is properly disposed of, as it can make rats immune to the poison, as well as just routine upkeep on lawn maintenance, again discouraging that green habitat that rodents can find in tall grass. And lastly, home protection goes a long way. So, just making sure that holes and cracks are addressed is another tip that we like to remind our residents of. Next slide. So, we'd like to end with some additional initiatives, starting with the Be More Beautiful Org, which is a community-like organization that engages residents and businesses to adopt cleaner city habits. We also offer community pitch-ins, where communities can request a roll-off or cleanup. And again, this is useful for reducing harborage and bulk waste and any other potential large items that rats can seek shelter in. And lastly, community cleanups with the mayor. And this is just a great seasonal reminder for residents to take an active part in cleaning up their communities and generally discouraging ratty habits. So, with that, I will pass the stage to HCD, who will touch on their education and outreach as well as their rodent call process.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee. This is Jason Wright, representing the Department of Housing and Community Development. I know that we are being conscious of time, so I will keep that in mind. So, for our education and outreach, we have ample materials on our website. It details housing, the zoning, and our building-related code as related to this particular issue. It provides information to owners and tenants on their responsibilities and has an FAQ for those most common topics that arise. We also have informational material such as sanitation guide for posting in units, a sanitation brochure, an illegal dumping brochure, and a code enforcement brochure. Next slide, please. Speaking to how rodent calls are rounded to DHCD, this happens mostly when residents are reporting issues in neighboring yards or a tenant is reporting an infestation. DHCD's code enforcement inspectors currently address exterior and interior rodent and pest control issues in line with property maintenance requirements covered in our building fire and related codes. Specifically, Section 305.4 and Section 307.7 require all external property areas to be kept free from infestation by insects, rodents, and any other pests, also the environments that would be conducive to their flourishing. When pests are found, they must be promptly exterminated by an approved process that will not be injurious to human health. The interior of every building must also be kept free of infestation by insects, rodents, and other pests. We also feel that inter-agency collaboration is critical for this particular issue. We go about that by sharing educational and outreach materials. We have regular conversations about external sanitary maintenance, proper trash disposal, and eliminating bulk waste. Once again, that can be a shelter, that can be a source of food. We have collaborative enforcement efforts with DPW's pest control team so that we can identify ongoing sanitation problems. The pest control team may alert DHCD inspectors when persistent issues are observed, and DHCD performs an inspection that may issue a citation for violations. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. We're going to go straight into questions, and I'm going to start. When we speak about inter-agency collaboration, well, let me start here. Is there some type of, what do you call the things? The little data when you guys come together and do the data, whatever it's called? Is it like a CleanStat? How often is CleanStat meeting?
I'll double-check. I think it's once per month, but DPW may know more directly.
The CleanStat meeting is once a month.
Okay. Within CleanStat, are you guys overlaying, specifically when it comes to rats, are you overlaying dirty alley requests? Are you overlaying, say, where there is tall grass, things like that, at the start of the mowing season? To kind of drill in on this. And the reason why I'm bringing that up is because within Hollentown, we have an area that I've been dealing with since I've been a council member since 2019, where we're continuously putting in 311s for dirty alleys within specific areas consistently. I also know they have a rat problem. So, how are you guys using that data between agencies and also from the code enforcement side to mitigate some of these red issues?
So, in CleanStat, the day that we look at, we look at dirty alleys, dirty streets, also HCD and the number of citations they're issuing for sanitation concerns. So, all of these things help eliminate the rat population. So, we do talk about those things in CleanStat.
For the mayor's office, could you guys put together an overlay for my, an overlay for my office about where the top, I just want to know the top 10 areas where the dirty alleys are requested, and I want to know what it looks like for where those rat items are as well? With two weeks being appropriate time for them to put something together to give me that information?
I believe so, Madam Chair, but I'll confirm and get back to you in case we might need a few more days. But I think.
Okay. And if you need more details, just let me know. I want to see something for the last 60 days.
Last 60 days?
The last 60 days.
Thank you.
And it's not just for my district. I want to see it for the city. I need to see if some things are added up. My second question is going to be regarding engagement. It's a very low-level item for me. I'm going back to Hollentown and to some other areas as well. We know that this is, a large portion of this is created because there's waste and folks are not cleaning up. I have some, I have residents who may be new to the area, who may not have the background to know, this is what we're supposed to do with recyclable materials. This is what we're supposed to do for trash materials. They're supposed to go into a can. How is DPW specifically, and also working with other agencies? And I'm going all over the place, but I'm going to try to center this. For example, I have a park that's new. And one thing that I asked of Rexon Parks is how are you communicating with other agencies to make sure that we're getting information out to the community? Not just from my office, but proactively about cleaning up this new park that we put here, that we invested $500,000 in? How are we proactively coordinating and getting messages out to the community, knowing that some of our newer residents, English may not be their first language as well? So, what are we proactively doing as agencies?
So, our communications section, we have community liaisons that go out. They meet with the community. They send out brochures and things like that in the mail. We add information into the water bills. So, those are some of the things we do. I don't have a communications person here with me today, but we do actively engage with the community all the time. Our community liaisons are out. And I know HCD has inspectors that are out also giving out information. So, that's how we get the information out. Also, we have our web, our website that has a lot of information. We're on social media, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. And then, like I said, we're going to community meetings also.
What is the budget specifically for engagement? Is there anything that's coming as far as a campaign? Because I'm on, when I'm on these streaming apps or I'm on John TV, watching hearings from other committees, I'm seeing Baltimore County with a whole campaign. And they're telling people, throw stuff in the trash. So, I guess that question should be, what are we doing around public awareness? Is there a budget? Is there something that's coming for public awareness about, hey, don't throw this in the trash? And DPW, I know you guys are doing some good work in the schools. And for me, it starts with our kids. I share a story, I'm not going to share it now, about how I started recycling. So, everybody in my house started recycling, and then everybody on my block recycled. But it started when I was a child, with former Mayor Dixon putting some things in place regarding recycling. So, but where are we at on a public awareness campaign?
Madam Chair, I actually participated myself in a career day and brought a lot of information to children about recycling, proper trash management. And it was like a really good experience. And I promoted as much information as I could with elementary and middle school students. We have a community outreach team that dedicates part of their time to do outreach. If you look at the slide, we have a, on the website, we have the details of our rat rubout program as well as a resource, a comprehensive resource guide that sort of explains, you know, what is the proper way to dispose of trash and the methods of recycling, et cetera. As far as the budget, I'm not sure what that amount is, but if you give me some time, I'll be more than happy to send that information your way.
Can you compile the information regarding what the budget is, specifically regarding community engagement? And I'm saying it because what we're doing right now, it's not enough. It's not enough. What I would like to see is some, I want to see some time board for some radio ads. I want to see something, I want to know how are the jurisdictions around us putting these things up and utilizing them? It doesn't, I'm seeing it on YouTube. I'm seeing it on Hulu. I'm seeing it on these other places, and it's reaching me. I want it to happen in Baltimore City. I'm going to stop there. Thank you so much to Councilwoman Porter for bringing this bill. I know that she has a ton of questions, and I'm not going to eat up all your time. So, you have the floor.
No, you were there. I want to kind of transition into rat birth control. So, ContraPass is one of the main ingredients for rat birth control that has seen a 90% effectiveness in other cities like San Francisco and New York. Has the city of Baltimore explored that option to reduce our rodent population in the city?
Yes, we've explored that option. They came in and presented to us. The issue that we have is our permit allows us to have certain types of poisons and bait. So, we have to look into how we can use that. But we have spoken to them. They did a presentation for us. We've seen what they've done in other jurisdictions. So, yes, we have looked into that.
And where are we in that process of kind of coming to resolution to that? The reason why I'm asking that, I believe that a few years ago, a few budget seasons ago, I asked about rat rubout, particularly with rat birth control. And so, that was about two years ago. Where are we in that process for coming to some sort of conclusion that we, as the council, can kind of spearhead for the next budget season for FY 2026?
I haven't been involved in it, but I can get you that answer.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. If we can get that within a week, I think that would be appropriate. And then, my next question has to deal with assessments, similar to Chair McCray's point about success metrics. How are you all judging success of the rat rubout program? So, I hear about 76,000 touches have been made. However, there's still a large rat population, one of three, within my district. How are you all garnering success, tracking success? Because the rat population is still proliferating at a very high rate.
Yeah. So, the rats are going to, we're going to continue to have rats as long as the sanitation issue is not handled, under control. I mean, we have residents and even citizens, residents, people that come into Baltimore, they have to dispose of their trash properly. If the rats have a food source, a water source, shelter, they're going to be around. No amount of bait we use will mitigate that. If you look at the data on the different districts, the areas where we have a lot of dirty alleys, dirty streets, crime and grime, all of those things contribute to the rat population. And we have to, along with the residents, make those changes. And if we can't do that, no matter what we do, even if we were able to get the rat birth control, I mean, it's just going to continue. So, yes, I mean, we cleaned, and sometimes we clean and we come around a corner and it's back again. So, we just ask residents, please put it in the trash can. You know, don't put bags out. Eliminate that food source, and we'll start seeing a reduction. How do we look at success? We do more inspections. And as we're doing those inspections, the number of rat burrows that we find, if the least, if we find, if the number of rat burrows we find decreases, then we believe we are being successful in that particular area. If we initially went there and we inspected the entire area, we found 200 rat burrows, we go back in two weeks, you know, and that number starts decreasing, then we know that we're making a difference. But it has to be a combination of removing the food source, the water source, and the shelter along with our proactive inspections and baiting the rat burrows that we find.
And I'm so glad you said, I'm so glad you talked about inspections, because one of the main issues that we are seeing is that when inspectors come out, they say they can't find the cause of issue with DHCD. So, there's a disconnect between DPW and DHCD with regard to the inspection. So, going back to Chair McCray's point, how are you all coordinating inter-agency collaboration for this program? And I say that because literally, within the 311 system, you see conflicting. you see conflicting outcomes from both agencies. And when my team goes out, we see the rat burrows right then and there. So it's like, how are you all reconciling that?
So we work really well with DHC. I'm not sure, I mean, I have to look into what you're talking about. Maybe, you know, if they have new inspectors that haven't been, you know, trained on what to look for. And we can work with them to make sure that happens. That could be the case, but I haven't heard that information. So I will have to check with DHC. We work with them every day. We talk to them every day. So if that is happening, you know, we can get to the bottom of it and make sure that the inspectors know what they're looking at. Of course, our pest control workers, they're the experts. So they're going to know when it's a rat burrow or when it's just a crack in the cement or in the foundation. So yes, I can definitely work with HCD to make sure we're all on the same page in that area.
Okay, I'd love to schedule a follow-up meeting with you all. Because Yvonne, even though you are exceptionally great, there is major issues with that coordination between the two agencies that we are seeing within the district. And I wonder if it's happening citywide. So we really need to do a deep dive, not only within the education, but also the technical assistance, the coordination of notes and reporting within Salesforce and the 3-1-1 system for all offices and also for residents as well. And I'll save my questions for the next round.
Thank you. We've been joined by Councilwoman James Torrance from the 7th District. You're welcome. Did you have any questions recognizing that your district is four out of 14 with these requests? Okay, you have the floor.
Similar to Councilwoman Porter, I wanted to do a follow-up because of the large vacant crisis that I have in my district. Often when we have rubout, we don't actually go on vacant properties. And then they create new burrows and colonies in the vacant properties. And then it then negates everything that DPW does. So I want to have an honest conversation about tracking data for vacant building notices. Because I think if we have a vacant building notice on there, we should be able to bait on the property and charge them for it. Because the properties actually, I'm just going to say this, people dump in those properties. So it gives them the food and water source that they need to sustain a colony. But I think that coordination with the agencies in terms of those notices should be applicable as well. Love a follow-up from DCHD on that because what I've found is that we have, this goes back to a conversation I have with Councilwoman Ramos and other council members. What looks vacant to me and my neighbors may not be vacant to DCHD often. And then sometimes we've had multiple notices within a calendar year that did not eventually become a vacant building notice. So we get there, our neighbors file 3-1-1s. And then those two unabated notices don't become a vacant building notice for us. So I just want to make sure that we can tighten that up because that makes the work of DPW even less hard. I do have a question for DPW. I noticed that like we have a large number of requests. You guys, I believe at one time when we ran our own data, you have addressed over 80% of those requests within your service year. I know that this can be overwhelming. Have we thought about looking at changing the consent process? I know in DC, you see a rat hole, you kill it. I think that we need to have conversations about the consent with the law department because I've literally had in some of the areas where we've had a large number of rat infestations, six neighbors say no, and then we can't do it for the block. I think that we need to have a conversation about that, especially because of the public health crisis. And I would defer to the administration for a meeting on that with the law department, seeing if we can do an opt-out rather than an opt-in. My biggest harm is because in my district, I have one of the largest asthma rates. And these Norwegian rats do have issues that can trigger asthma. So just a few committee follow-ups. One is DCHD in terms of vacant building notices for red abatement. And then the other is working with the administration in the law department on the opt-out form rather than the opt-in form, which makes it easier for DPW to get through the service request sooner than later.
Okay, I do want to just let you know, we do bait vacant buildings. So all public areas, streets, alleys, tree wells, and we will bait vacant buildings. So that we are doing that. And I hear what you're saying, if it doesn't have a vacant building notice, we won't be able to bait. It has to have the vacant building notice. And so when we go out to do our sprint, we call it a sprint. When we go out, we have all our pest control workers, they go in one particular neighborhood. They do a blitz through, they inspect every house. They will bait anything that they see in the alleys. We do need a consent order to be on somebody's property. So if they are not home and we see the rat burrows, we will put a tag on the door to let them know that we were there. We saw rat burrows, do you consent for us to come back to bait those rat burrows? If they don't, then we send that address over to HCD and they will issue them a violation notice. So with that violation notice, they have a certain amount of time to bait it themselves or get us to come back out to do it. So that is the process right now.
Councilwoman Porter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My next question has to deal with local businesses. So I noticed that District 1 was one of the main sources of rat infestation on the spreadsheet. How are you all coordinating with local businesses to maybe incentivize using cleaner methods so that we don't have that large rat population? The reason why I say that is because rats travel. They travel. And so if we have those commercial settings within our neighborhoods, ideally, I'm talking about like gas stations, things of that nature. If they're within our neighborhoods, they're ideally traveling through the burrows, through the tunnels to the neighborhoods. So how are you all working with local businesses to maybe incentivize proper upkeep, cleanliness and sanitation? And if they're not doing it, how are we fining them?
So if we see a sanitation problem and we forward that over to HCD, they'll send someone out to talk to that business owner or issue a citation or violation notice or what have you. We don't have enforcement abilities. But again, our liaison officers are out in the community. That's, you know, they check businesses if that's a concern of the neighborhoods. They talk to residents. It's all about sanitation. If we notice as we're going through collecting trash or cleaning the sidewalks and we see that this business is not following the sanitation guidelines, then we'll send that over to HCD so that they can have a conversation with that business owner.
So for HCD, how many, I mean, you may not know this right now. How many citations have you all issued to this effect to local businesses?
I don't have that information on hand right now, but I can absolutely get it back to you. Just to make sure that I completely understand, you want the number of citations that were issued to businesses?
Yes, by council district.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Councilwoman Torrance, did you have any additional questions?
No, not for this room, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Porter, did you have any additional questions?
Yes, ma'am, I have one more question. The budget for the rat robot program, do we have that number? What is that number?
I don't have it handy, but I'll make sure I get it to you soon.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that can go along with the budget requests from Councilwoman McCray. Thank you, ma'am. No further questions.
Thank you. We're going to move into public testimony. Looks like we do have someone who is signed up to testify today. And we're going to do public testimony within the chambers first. And then we are going to move to see if there's anyone virtually who would like to testify. When, if you would like to testify virtually, if you could just use the raise hand function so we can identify you when we get to that point. Once you are called to testify, please state your first and last name and also if you're with an organization. The person I have signed up right now is Angela Williams. And Ms. Williams, if you could hit the button that would be on your right-hand side that looks like a speaker, just to turn the mic on. It's on, yeah.
Hello, my name is Angela Cruz-Williams. I'm with the Morrell Park Community Association. I wanted to state that I have been involved with the Be More Beautiful Project, the pigeons, and we also do the mayor's cleanups. I just wanted to also talk about, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. I also wanted to talk about the trash in Baltimore City. It's, I come downtown and I see the streets are so clean. And in Morrell Park, we have trash just laying all around the streets. And Morrell Park Community Association, we've recently got two solar compactor trash cans. They've actually been working really well. It was a process getting in touch with the right people and coordinating with the right people to get them installed. And it's something that I wasn't familiar with. I had help with Ms. Porter and I thank you for that. It's really, it's really been helpful for the neighborhood. You see a lot less trash, but I feel like the trash has been the main problem when it comes to how many rats we see. I actually have next door to me a rat that seems kind of friendly. He comes out every day and we can stand right next to him and he's just there chilling. So it's kind of, you know, I don't really know the word for it, but it's a shame that we have friendly rats that just come right up to us. But I wanted to really bring the point up that I feel like we do definitely, as the community association, we definitely should see our liaisons a lot more often. I wonder if there's a process of the liaisons reporting back to the city to say, look, we went to this community association and we speak to these people? Because there's been a few months where I haven't seen or spoke to my liaison. And there's questions that I have. And it's hard going back and forth with not getting any answers. Like for example, the solar trash cans. We should be able to contact the liaison, get the information in the first or second phone call. We shouldn't have to keep calling and keep following up. So, which we do. Also, the pigeons, I believe it's the pigeons that give us the four trash cans per year. We need more. We definitely need more. And Ms. Porter recently helped us with getting another dumpster. We actually filled a dumpster. We paid somebody to go around the community and pick up. He got like 12 mattresses. And it filled, the dumpster was filled before time was up. Like we did it within two hours. And I feel like it would be nice to maybe consider allowing community associations to put dumpsters on city property with big dumpsters with a lid and put the community association in control of that dumpster and say, hey, when it's ready to be empty, just call us. And we could help a lot more than what we do. It's hard for us to set up a cleanup when we don't know where we're going to put the bags and the bulk items after we do a cleanup. That's been a problem. It's been a real problem. And again, we do have the support of Ms. Porter. It's been very helpful, but maybe not every community association has that support. Where, we definitely need more places to put the trash. And I think that would help with the rats going away. They have so many places that they can eat, drink and hide. And as far as the friendly rat next door to me, we put in, we put in hails and requests, 3-1-1 requests, things of that nature. Because my neighbor next door just had to have her whole basement redone to prevent rats because they were coming inside the hails. When we put in a 3-1-1 request, she has privacy fence and they just closed it. And we keep putting in 3-1-1 requests and they just keep closing it. So I feel like, I believe you kind of answered the question that I had. I was wondering, do you make sure that you contact the owner of the property before actually closing these requests? I think speaking to the property owner would go a long way versus just closing it and someone like me consistently putting in reports. It's just wasting a whole lot of time and money when just speaking to the property owner, it might have an outcome. Again, it does really go back to the trash in Baltimore City. Morrell Park has a lot of trash and that's one of our big issues. And we're trying to bring up the morale in the community. You know, we see somebody throw something on the ground. There's not many people, but some of us will say, hey, pick that up. And they do. I mean, but there's not very many people that will say that. They're afraid to speak up. So I just wanted to put that little piece of information in here. Thank you very much. I appreciate this hearing happening and thank you for giving me a chance to speak. Thank you.
Ms. Williams, thanks for sharing your testimony. We are very grateful.
Thank you.
Ms. Moore Jackson, I'm not sure if you're the only representative from DPW today, but can we just make sure that someone just connects with Ms. Williams or gets her information to Chief Winkler so she can have not only, yeah, so she can get her liaison.
Right after the hearing.
Thank you. I don't believe that we have anyone else within the chambers who would like to testify, but we're going to go and just double-check on virtually to see if anyone is there as well. Okay, so I don't see any hands raised for virtual testimony. So that's going to close out public testimony. Do you have a comment? Okay.
This is for the administration, just a follow-up with coordination with animal control because while their work is successful, the other colonies may feed on those who did not make it. I think that we need to have a conversation about cleanup too, when we do these large area abatements too. That's it.
I have a comment, then I'm going to swing it to our sponsor in case she wants to close out. Ms. Williams had an idea. One thing that I think is a great idea, I think, just like we're always in here, we have to constantly challenge ourselves, whether we're council members, whether we are city agencies, to think outside of the box to solve the simple stuff. The simple stuff. Trash is very simple to me. Put it in a can. If someone's not putting it in a can, how do we make sure that they get it where it's supposed to go? What I want to see from the administration, and I'm very much looking forward to how much we're spending on this stuff. You've given us an updated idea. We need a real campaign. We had campaigns when I was growing up. We had different things. We do not have them now. People need to know that we all share this space. And we're not going to be here, but it's going to be other generations here. How the heck do you dispose of the trash? And it's just very simple to me. So I'm looking forward to seeing a public awareness campaign run. Enter real inter-agency collaboration because we're not going to solve this going to just community, going to community meetings. It's not going to be solved that way. It's eight to 10 members in my community association meetings and I got 40,000 people that I represent. So how can we do more? And that's, and that's my comment. Councilwoman Porter?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And just to add on to that, I'm really looking for proactive, scientific ways that we can do this. While we want to prioritize community members, I believe that we have advances within this space that we could be integrating into the city of Baltimore. Ms. Williams coming here today from Morale Park, using her own personal funds to come here and share the issues that we are existing in. Morale Park is just one of many resident concerns that we in the council's office get. I know you all get our emails and, and our, and our text messages and our communications, but we have so much more work to do in this space and I'm willing to, to have that conversation, to kind of do the deep dive. I just want to make sure that we have the political will and the administration support behind this. We can't keep moving in this direction. And other cities are beginning to speak more about it and solve these issues. And so I want Baltimore to be that, be a leader in that respect. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. You heard it here, common sense approach, scientific approaches. I believe we can get it done. This hearing is now in recess and thank you all. Have a great day.